All right, the meeting will come to order. We are now having the February meeting of Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. Would you join in a pledge of allegiance to our flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are pleased to have a school presentation from Fayette Central and from Frey Zee. And we'll begin that by having Mrs. Rowley, if you will, to take charge here for a moment.
Okay. It's my pleasure to introduce my two third grade teachers. This is Brittany Wildman and Brooke Tipton is over there. And they're going to share with you a little bit about the Acuity, the I-Step, and how they have been working to get their students ready and prepare them for this test. Thank you.
All right. So, we have noticed a lot of different changes happening with the I-Step this year. So, we have made sure that we are providing our students with all the resources that they need to succeed on it. So, the first thing that we do is we have to discover what they need. And we've looked at vocabulary that they might not be aware of. And we've looked at the questions on Acuity and standards and things and just seen what vocabulary they're not used to. We make sure we use it in our everyday language. We've made acre charts of vocabulary words. And sometimes we have vocabulary quizzes so that we know that they actually know them. And then after we have gone over vocabulary, we also look to see, we've looked on the DOE website at the blueprint for the I-Step, what are their critical standards, what's going to be on there. And we also look on the Acuity readiness to see what standards need to be re-taught and the CFAs and things like that. So, you'll see on the next screen, that's just a snapshot of Acuity readiness, our most recent one, the report. And I just zoomed in on something that we've already re-taught. If you can see where the red arrows are in the green highlighted section, that's what my class did on main idea, that skill. So, only 23% and 41% of them actually got that question correct. So, that was a big red flag to me that I'd already taught it. So, obviously, they didn't really master it. So, we decided to go over it. And I'm going to show you some resources that I used to go over it. First of all, we taught some mini lessons on it to reteach it. Oh, you're fine. And then, this is a question that comes from the College and Career Readiness. So, what we've done is we've pulled all these resources and we use them when we're teaching this specific skill. So, this, you can see, is a longer passage. There's a scroll bar. That's a new item for them, not a new item, but an item that they struggle with, a very long story with scroll bar. And before they even read the story, we really encourage them to read the question or questions. You can see this has two different questions. So, that's very new to them. They're used to one question per page. So, we've really focused on making sure you're looking at what every question is. So, they read the questions first, and then they read the passage. And what we've been practicing is, since it's such a long passage, to stop after every, like, paragraph or two, and they ask themselves, "What have I read so far?" That way, they're remembering what they read instead of trying to remember it all at the end. So, then, when they answer the question, we teach them, if it's a multiple choice question, to try to eliminate two answers. That way, it's easier for them to narrow it down. And then, you can see part B, I'm not going to read all of it, but part B goes with part A. So, we encourage them to make sure they read part A again, remember what their answer is, to help them answer part B. We also have used the Park website. And the Park is even a little bit more challenging than that one was. They had to read a question, and this is the Park's practice test. So, they had to scroll down, and they actually have two different stories in one selection. So, they had to connect those two. And then, the question was actually asking them to find two possible main ideas. And we had to teach them to scroll and to actually be able to move the main idea where it goes. And you can see it turns yellow when you click on it. And when you put it down into the box, when you scroll back up, that selection is now yellow. So, we had to show them that means you already selected that one, that kind of thing. So, we just, a lot of it is technology enhanced, which is new to them. They actually do catch on very quickly. They have technology all around them. So, we're finding they're really catching on quickly to the technology. And then, some other resources that we have used, I just have screenshots of for you to see. We use the Engage New York site a lot. And this is just to see, I used this with the main idea lesson because this story, it was like a two or three-page story. I just did a screenshot for you. This question was talking about the main idea. So, Engage New York is a great website that we have been using. We've also used ReadWorks.org. And we like this one too because it has short answer questions. Number five, it kind of got cut off. It was a short answer question that they had to answer. So, this again was going with main idea. And then, finally, after we had re-taught main idea, we've done a lot of different assessments and saw where they're at. We went over, the next slide shows the Acuity question. So, we wanted them to actually answer it on their own again to see if, after we re-taught it all, if they were finally able to master a question like that. And that's just a PDF of it, but, so you can actually print it off and give it to them again. And on the actual question, you had to scroll down for the answer choices. So, that's just, yes.
I'm sorry, I missed it. What grade level are we?
This is third grade.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. So, also, after we've done many lessons and things, we do additional things in the classroom to make sure that they're ready. We use Acuity assignments quite frequently during independent reading times and things like that. We have centers so that they can do Acuity assignments. We also do skill groups, meaning, one of the very first slides you guys saw with like the green highlighted things, some of those, a lot of our students have mastered, but there might be six of them that didn't. So, we do skill groups, and we pull those six students that didn't get that specific skill or standard, and we work with them on that. We also have done the college and career practice in the lab, and we've also done a lot of practices for short answers. So, as we've been getting these resources, we've been pulling them into our lessons. So, they've been exposed to them as soon as we have gotten them. So, although it's all new and challenging, they have had a chance to see all the resources that we have seen. So, we make sure that they're ready for that. And Brooke's going to talk to you a little bit about a math-type question.
Okay. The question that you're going to see, first off, we have the blueprint of the actual standard. This standard was generating measurement data by measuring lengths using rulers marked by halves and fourths and inches. And then, they also worked to put that into a line plot. As you can see, 36% of my students mastered this, answered this question correctly. So, that let me know that I needed to reteach this standard. So, on the next slide, you're going to see the actual question. I did a screenshot of this question. So, on the actual test, they had to scroll down to see the answers. And the problem was, when they scrolled down to see the answers, they lost the table. So, they couldn't see the table anymore. And I figured that was their main problem because they were trying to memorize the table and then go down to find the answer. So, when I re-taught this question, I modeled for them how to utilize that scrap paper that was in front of them. And to actually create the line plot on their scrap paper by looking at the table first and then scrolling down and matching the line plot they put on their scrap paper with the answers that they seen below. So, the challenge there was the scrolling down, and they thought that they needed to memorize rather than use the scrap paper. So, again, this technology-enhanced question was a challenge for them at that time. But as we worked through it, they seen that it was easier when they used their scrap paper. The next question you're going to see is off of the College and Career Readiness website. This question is similar to the one we just seen, only it is more challenging in the fact that there is no longer a table there. They actually have just the data. And then, they have to drag and drop the X's to create their line plot. So, we have practiced this. I've modeled it first and then actually had them practice this in the lab as well because I want them to realize that they have to pay careful attention to where they're dragging and dropping on the line plot because there are several fractions there. So, again, the technology is what we're noticing. The formatting of the test is what the challenge is. So, we are trying our best to use those resources that we have been provided to model how to answer these technology-enhanced questions.
Questions for either of these two teachers?
On your samples that you're using, obviously, reading and math comprehension, are you going across, are any of these examples that you're using social studies-based or science-based? Or is it basically just catch-as-catch-can? In other words, is there substantive textual material from the other subject areas that are being as a part of this Acuity piece?
Yeah, a lot of the reading passages deal with science or social studies topics. And third grade is also not tested on science or social studies. However, we have used some of the reading passages in science or social studies lessons that we were kind of spreading it across the subjects, tying them all in together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rachel Quorum teaches sixth grade at Frey Zee. And she actually is going to share with you the actual second readiness test. We had our tech people set it up so that you can actually see it and see how students have to manipulate it, the screens, and use the tools. And then, she will also be sharing what she is doing in the classroom. It was wonderful to hear Fayette Central, the things they share because that's the things everyone in the corporation at the elementary level are doing. So, we've been sharing with one another how we can best help our students. And now, Rachel's going to prepare and actually show you the actual test and the type of questions students have in sixth grade math.
I think girls did a wonderful job kind of explaining what we use in the classroom. Same thing with sixth grade. We utilize a lot of the same resources. On our Fayette County website, there is a College and Career Readiness link, which we're able to use to help them practice and the students to go to the computer lab and actually manipulate all of the tools. You know, this year, it's different. They're going to have, they have blocking rulers. They'll have different tools they have to pull, drag, and drop, and so students will do that. This is the second math Acuity readiness test that students took a couple weeks ago. Previously, they did what was known as predictive tests. So, every several weeks, they would take a test, and it would be based on what we should have already taught them, the standards, maybe 10 standards. Now, the readiness tests are testing all sixth grade standards. So, the scores are going to be lower, some items we haven't taught yet. But they're also going to prepare us to see, okay, what do our students already know that maybe we haven't taught yet? So, maybe we don't need to spend as much time on that subject area. Or, if we have taught it, we can narrow down to what specific skill they need additional work on. As they mentioned, the Acuity reports, there are even item analysis, takes each problem question by question. And you can look and see what percentage chose A, what percentage chose B. So, you can figure out what was the main weakness the students had. Was it the technology-enhanced questions or was it the actual calculation? A problem such as this, they have a cube made of cardstock paper, and it says, "The net of the cube is shown." So, students have to know what a net is. They have to realize it's taking a cube and actually cutting it and flattening it. Some of the vocabulary, it's increased tremendously. And then, they have to find the total surface area. Some of these, they will not be able to use the reference sheets. They will need to know what surface area is. They need to realize that they flattened the cube and that it is the shape. They also have to know that if this is four inches, then we have four inches here. They'll find the surface area of one square, and they're going to have to multiply that by each of the six squares to find the surface area for that type of problem. Another issue we've got to make sure our students realize is that there is a line, if you can see, like a faint white line here. Previously, if they took a test, if there were 25 questions, they can mark a question to review, go back. With this section, numbers one through six, they may use a calculator. And it's provided as a simple calculator online. However, they have to submit the one through six before they can move on. So, many students want to, they get stuck on a problem. Obviously, the one through six are going to be the most difficult, but they can't spend too much time because they've got to submit that before they get to go on through seven to 25. And it's in the same timeframe. So, they're going to have to stop, submit it, and move on. And so, that's really going to make them, it's just a big change. We've got to get them ready so they understand that. So, once I click here, like on number nine, again, it's going to show me what I have not answered, and then I need to go to next. Once they do the next, they submit the test, they can no longer go back to these questions. On a problem such as number nine, they have to select all equations that have y equals six as a solution. Previously, on tests I've seen in the past, before we had this new enhanced test, it would have been which equation would give you the solution y equals six. Now, they select all equations that have that as a solution. So, they're not only working backwards, they also have to try every possible answer. So, in class, to help prepare them, we are saying, you know, you have to show work for every question. If we give them one like this, they need to show that this side of the equation is equal to this side on each one. So, not only are we needing to improve their stamina on English, we've also got to improve their stamina in math and showing all their work for each problem. On problem 10, this one is the technology-enhanced. The information itself isn't that difficult, but how to manipulate this is very difficult. Many of my students, the first time we took this, when it was new to me as well, they thought this was a calculator. They wanted to do some type of calculation, when really, that is just putting their answer. So, on this problem, they have a number line, they have two negative numbers, and they have to enter an inequality. They have to realize they have to show an inequality. These are the operation symbols for inequalities to put in between it. They've also got to figure out, how do you manipulate this to put a mixed number in the problem? So, on this one, they have to know this is your negative. And then, there's all of these buttons. They don't have labels, what they need. These first two here are what I would call, if you're typing on a keyboard and you hit the insert key, so you can put a number in, that's where they can go back and insert. These two would be moving them left to right, and then, if they went on top of the four, it would be to change the number. So, if I want to enter negative four and one-fourth, then I want to make sure it's spaced over. You have to do the fractions. I need to make sure I have the one up here. Now, if I don't type, if I don't push the actual click in the box, it's going to put it up here. So, they're going to have to know how to delete. They need to go down and click into the box. Again, move over so that they're off of the fraction or the mixed number. And then, they're going to put in their operation symbol again. Over.
You're doing very well, Rachel.
So, that's what they're going to ask them to do. And that took some work on my part even getting. But also, when I was looking on this, and I went back and looked at the answers because now they've allowed all the readiness to be accessible to teachers. So, we can manipulate, show these on, you know, our smart boards, on projectors through our computers. But a problem such as this, I think as teachers, we need to show them too, you could have used the decimal. It doesn't say in here, what's the fractional statement. It says, what's the statement? So, if they had a decimal, they would not have had to work with the mixed numbers. So, kind of showing them both ways so they know how to solve it depending on what they're more comfortable with. Another one I want to show you, on this one, they are asked to consider the data in the line plot based on the shape, which of these is the most appropriate measure of center? Previously, it would have asked, find the mean, find the median of the data. Now, they have to know the definitions of the terms. They have to realize there's an outlier for number 10. And they have to understand what's the appropriate measure of center. How is it going to affect, how's that outlier, that number 10, going to affect the rest of the data? They have to realize what the definitions are and solve. So, it's going higher depth of knowledge. They're not only just asking them how to solve it, they're making them look at several different standards packed together to try to solve. So, I think as teachers, we've got to be very mindful of making sure that we are giving them additional exposure to these type of questions. They've got to have that hands-on manipulation of the problems. As I mentioned previously, that academic vocabulary they're going to see has increased as well as, I think even as teachers, not letting them see us stress. I think they've got to see that you're capable of doing this, it's just going to take more time, and we're going to have to work through this together. So, letting them show that they are capable of doing it, it's just going to take practice. Are there, I went that quickly, are there any questions that I might be able to answer as far as Acuity or the type of questions they are asked?
Is the Acuity a timed task, Rachel?
This is not. This is open, but it's with the same author as I-Step, which obviously will be timed. With this one, they have the time they need to be successful.
What they're promising, one of the things they've had in the news about is the long time windows for I-Step. Part of it is to accommodate this. So, just to give the students more time to take the test so they're not rushed. They really want them to be able to go through and get to those answers, but who knows how long it really takes a kid to do that? I don't know. I don't know how they've worked that out.
When does the process become, when does the process of taking the test become more important than the result of the test?
But I will tell you, and Rachel, you can correct me if I'm wrong. What this is doing is it's setting the expectations of the, what the students' outcome, much higher than we ever have. It's not just it's more difficult to push the buttons. The questions that they're asking are much higher than what I-Step is normally asking of the students. So, the good part is, you know, this has given us the opportunity for great teachers, as Ms. Quorum is, that to get on board and really stretch our kids, because our kids can do this if we know that this is what they're expected to do. It's just going to take a little while to build up the stamina, but also that rehearsal piece of that. And they can do this. So, you know, it's a tough assessment, but I would rather it be that than an easy assessment that we do well on, but it doesn't really show that we're ready for college and career readiness. So, it's just kind of the learning curve is what we have.
And thankfully, now that all these are available and we can kind of, since we're seeing them earlier on, we can, whenever we're teaching a certain section like in math or a certain standard, we can incorporate those. So, I think it's better for them if they see it's a question like this when we're studying data landmarks versus when we are, you know, at the end, trying to show them samples. If we can take these problems and incorporate them into our everyday lessons, since they are available, we're allowed to use these as a teaching tool. And so, they see, how does this relate to what I'm teaching in class and giving them that higher depth of knowledge.
So, Rachel, you must have materials that's going to properly teach you how to teach the kids, right?
As far, I mean, there are, like I said, lots of the websites, like the Engage New York. We have different websites, schools that have in other states that have done something similar that we can use. But also, now that we have these, using these as a tool, since they've been, they've already taken the assessment, it's not, it's available. We won't send them home, but we're allowed to use them in classes as instruction tools. So, using these and like the manipulation, it was practice. You know, I was manipulating it to figure it out. And now, I can show them step by step, this is how to place it in the computer.
The other thing that's becoming quite more readily available are videos. So, they do videos for teachers to watch other teachers and, you know, the concept so that the teacher understands the concept. Because sometimes, I mean, if they've not experienced the math themselves, they're going to have a learning curve. But that's the new wave now is really, the NCTM has got a number of videos on these different concepts and by grade level, the teachers can just on their own watch how to do this. And so, that's something that we didn't have years ago that we have to take a better advantage of, but it's starting to, you know, be there for our help.
And we get a percent on the Acuity. When we get all the different scores, they'll give us a percent of how the students do on just the technology-enhanced portion. So, we can use that score to figure out, are they improving? You know, once I've taught this, are they improving? So, there's an overall, how do they do on all the standards? And then, how do they do just on the technology-based questions to see if that was, you know, the issue? Which at this point, you know, it is until we teach them the process of how to manipulate it into the computer. And getting parents on board to, you know, when you go to the website, having parents go to the website, some, you know, as many as we can to get them to try these, to work through them at home. Any other questions?
I thought it was important that you, I mean, I showed you a few questions, but I thought it would be important for you to see what the students actually need to do to be successful and convey the knowledge that they had. And I will tell you, last Thursday afternoon, the Superintendent Study Council that I'm a part of, we spent about an hour, an hour and a half with Superintendent Ritz. And she was talking about, you know, the department, talking about some of the challenges, talking about where we were. The day before, they had like a nine-hour meeting with the State Board that was more of a little challenging through that. And so, I was going to share some of her thoughts, and then the governor spoke last night, and everything changed. And I do have, I think, if we can get to it, a graphic to show you a little bit what the governor's talking about. We did talk about, it's going to take more time to get through some of these questions. But Cindy, are we?
Almost.
Okay. We've got a chart that was on the Learning Connection that you don't need to see the numbers and everything. It's like some of the other things I show you, just the pictorial will give a, will tell the whole story. But we have some shaded squares that talk about the amount of time that I-Step took last year and compare that to shaded squares of I-Step that I was expecting for this year. This is the Applied Skills piece, the part on the right. You can see there's some boxes there, but you go over to 14, 15, there are a whole lot more. You can see the total minutes for the Applied Skills last year, reading along the bottom, and those are by grade level, 160 minutes, 195, 192, 40, 241, 90. Compare that to what we were told we needed to be prepared for this year, 370, 405, 400. Pretty much double all that. Why? Well, part of that is, we were supposed to pilot a test this fall, and we didn't. So, we're piloting, we're testing, and then, we're also trying to do some things to satisfy some requirements of No Child Left Behind, and so, or at least our waiver part. Here's another portion, the multiple choice piece of the I-Step. You can see the number of minutes that we're associated with on the right-hand side of that, what was happening last year and what is anticipated to be happening this year, at least. That's what was supposed to be happening up until a little over 24 hours ago. So, I think with the presentation that we had, we just had, I think you have maybe a little better appreciation of what work our principals and teachers are doing to get our students prepared to take these tests. But what's happened in the last, I spent a good portion of the day reading articles, trying to figure out where we're going, what's happening with all that. And I think what we have is an excellent example of what can happen when egos and personal agendas get in the way of organization's mission and statement. And it's no, in my opinion, and I'll put my soapbox away here before I get too carried away, it's no longer about what it is kids need to know and be able to do. It's about egos and it's about personal agendas. So, I've asked Kathy if maybe she could talk to us a little bit about where we are, what the next steps are, and what to expect, at least until we get tomorrow's newspaper and find out what's happening.
Well, I think, you know, what we try to do is stulter some of the worst political, you know, acuity, you know, teachers don't need to hear all of that, et cetera. We focus on preparing the kids. And we know, and the confidence that we have that we are actually raising the expectations is not a bad thing. And with the work that the teachers are doing in the classroom and that the principals are supporting is good for kids. It does get frustrating when the politicians fight over, and they don't talk to one another. So, when one makes a decision, it gets overruled two weeks later after we've already started down that path. But it is what it is. The doubling is because, like Russ said, the state pulled the pilots, and now we have to do the pilot assessment. But the governor says he's going to, he's hired somebody to reduce the timing of the test. Well, that's not necessarily a good thing if it means the kids have less time to do the punching of the numbers. So, I don't think he understands that. So, we'll persevere through this. We will learn a lot. I know our students are going to probably be given, show more knowledge in the results. It won't look that way because the scores will probably look lower. But what they were asked to do was a much greater difficult level than before. So, the positive parts are, you know, we are advancing students. And when the politicians get their part figured out and et cetera, we're going to persevere right through that. And so, when we get our, you know, students in line, the knowledge is more, they'll get the test figured out, and they'll figure it out whether it counts or doesn't count, et cetera. We'll get feedback. And even like Acuity shows teachers what they've learned and what they haven't. We'll get that kind of information so we can continue on our job of doing, you know, improving our skills and improving our training and trying to reach these high expectations for the 21st century to ours. So, I'm proud of our teachers and principals. We don't quit. We persevere through all of their, it's just sad that they, when they have to be, you know, put out to pasture sometimes or try these experiments and whatnot, but it's okay. We'll be okay.
How is this in the best interest of the children? I've taken a bar exam, and it wasn't this, it wasn't this long.
Well, that's not good. The sitting is not good, but what they don't tell you is the kids aren't doing, they can stop the test if everyone's done in 30 minutes and move on. But they've given these huge windows because they don't want pressure, the kids to be pressured. The argument is, well, if you take those huge windows, you're not instructing kids on the next new thing to instruct them. You're still, you're timing out doing these assessments. That is the political, they've got to figure that part out.
Part of what Superintendent Ritz talked about is really this whole, this whole I-Step I-Step this year is, it could be considered a, a field test. They will analyze all of the, the responses, and just because a question is on the exam doesn't mean that's going to be counted as part of a student's pass or fail on that. They can't tell us which ones are and which ones aren't. So, it's, there's just a lot of uncertainty out there. It's partly because we're trying to move too fast. We didn't fill in some places that needed to be filled in before we moved on to the next step, but we've got the waiver for No Child Left Behind hanging over our heads, and the consequences for not following through on that are pretty significant. And unfortunately, the State Board, the governor, the governor, the General Assembly, Department of it, they're not working together. They're not working together. They're separate agendas, and, you know, who is going to be leading that? I don't know. The governor can appoint 10 people to the State Board, but he still wants to be able to make sure that, that he has some kind of input as to who sits as, as chair of that.
Well, and how does this impact on teacher evaluations? You've given a, you've thrown the teachers of Indiana this curve ball that they've never seen before. We're showing the kids a curve ball that they've never seen before. You know, it, it creates, I don't think any teacher has difficulty taking responsibility for those things over which they have control, or at least a modicum of control. But this is, is so far out there, so how can you say that, that Rachel, for example, is ineffective, and I'm sure she's not, because her children did not do well on this test that was an abomination in, in many respects, on, on so many levels?
Thursday evening, Superintendent Ritz said that she would like to hit the pause button on, on that, that particular piece. She also told us that was up to the General Assembly to do that. So, I don't know. So, part of what we're showing tonight is to help people understand, we are not in a position to make the rules. We're trying to do the best we can to equip our staff to be able to play by the rules as we understand them, but they're constantly changing, and that's, that's probably more frustrating to me than anything. Tell me what it is you want us to do. Help us understand what the rules are, and we've got great people that work incredibly hard, and they're going to make it work, and I think we've demonstrated that over time. Right now, we can't give that guidance, and that's, that's disturbing. But they're out there working, they're working hard.
They're doing the right work.
And they're doing the right work. So, whatever comes out of this, I don't see it being significantly different than the things that they've shown you. It's just, it's just, it's just really frustrating, and I'll, I'll, I'll stop before I get myself in trouble. And why don't I say, because I, I did share with, with them, I would have this little piece before we moved on to the agenda, but in so doing, I stole their applause, so why don't we give them a nice hand for the good job that they did?
I was just going to say, thank you so much for, what would you say, your informative presentation, and I guess we could summarize it in one word, wow. Wow. And that's, that's a difficult thing. So, okay, we have a, a recognition that we'd like to do, and Mr. Judd, if you would come forward, would let you do that.
That was very informative, and it's also very depressing. So, it is my pleasure to make you smile tonight. I don't make a lot of people smile in my job. I'm going to tell you a little bit about one of my former students, who for the last seven years have been, has been one of my office colleagues, and I can't express to you how much her presence in my office means to me. This is Jamie Hamm. She is the Guidance Department Chair. She is one of the leaders on our early college high school teams, our team, and when I need things explained to me that I don't always understand, she's one of the people that can do that. She has been a volunteer coach for our system several times. She's been a paid coach. Couple of years ago, she was fortunate enough to be the recipient of one of the Lilly Grants, and she spent some time in Nashville, Tennessee, learning how to play guitar and banjo. She's a bluegrass fan. I didn't know that. So, when she came back, one of the things she did, she started a guitar club. So, she's sponsor of the guitar club. Currently, she is riding horses. She's, she's learning how to be a horseback rider. That's one of her hobbies. Last year, or two years ago, she was instrumental, the leader actually, in our Guidance Department when our Guidance Department became Gold Star Certified. That's a rarity in Indiana. A lot of schools are striving to achieve that. Jamie and our crew achieved it in a very short amount of time. When we went to get that honor at the Indiana Counselor Convention, Jamie was also recognized as the Indiana Counselor of the Year. This year, I'm pleased to announce that she was awarded in Washington DC as a semifinalist, National Counsel, Counselor of the Year. So, I, I think maybe her next step would be to be appointed Chair of the State Board of Education. She's not going to be elected anymore. So, Jamie, congratulations.
Jamie, on behalf of the Board of School Trustees, I'd like to present you with this certificate. It says this certificate is awarded to Ms. Jamie Hamm in recognition of being named as one of the top 40 finalists of the 2015 National School Counselor of the Year. Congratulations.
Want to ask her any questions about her time in Washington?
I felt she went to the White House.
She was in the White House.
What happened there, Jamie?
There was a ceremony at the White House where Michelle Obama spoke, as well as Connie Britton. She, she played a school counselor on the TV show Friday Night Lights. I don't know if any of you saw that. So, she, she gave a little speech, and then Michelle Obama gave a speech, just kind of recognizing the work that school counselors do and thanking us. And then after that, we went to Union Station for a gala. Everybody got all fancy dressed up, and we were awarded again with certificates and...
Great food.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you for being with us.
If you go to our Facebook page, you'll see a picture of Michelle Obama and Jamie kind of looking over her shoulder, and if you listened to this month's podcast, it was dedicated to Jamie and this, this award.
Thank you. Okay, moving into our business then, I believe we are ready for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilton.
I approve the agenda as submitted.
My second.
Ms. Kirchner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Are there any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we move on. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, which was sent out to all you Board members last week, so you've had a chance to read through all of that. That Consent Agenda includes approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of January 13, 15. The Personnel Report, which included retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. Approval of January 2015 Claims Number 38030 through Number 38320. The Acceptance of Donation, which is a donation for the CMS Wrestling Program of $1,500 from the Fayette County Wrestling Club. Also a donation valued at $150 for the WTCC from Contract Industrial Tooling. Also is an annual list of outstanding checks more than two years old and surplus furniture donation. Those are the items within the Consent Agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept this?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Now, we move into the action items, and first is our Personnel Report. Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Birchard. Dr. Hodges, members of the Board, just four persons for your consideration this evening. First off, Michelle Brennigan, a preschool teacher in Eastview effective February 9, 2015. Olivia Montini, Special Education Teacher of Raze, effective January 13, 2015. And support staff members, Shannon McCrary, Special Education Assistant, Eastview, effective February 2nd, and also a bus assistant effective February 2nd as well. And finally, Connie McKinney, Special Education Assistant at Fayette Central in Grandview, effective January 26, 2015. Those persons for your consideration this evening. Mr. Birchard.
Thank you, Dr. Bayer. Do I hear a motion to accept the Personnel Report?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Ms. Savoy, do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Hilton, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Ganster, aye? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Recommendation for bus purchases. Dr. Bayer.
Thank you. Jane Oakley is here tonight, and we, for recommending a purchase of a 128 passenger 2014 school bus, mini bus, costing $71,782. That includes a trade-in value of a 2002 mini bus. Just asking for the approval to purchase that, and for Jane, as she usually does and always does very well, make payment upon delivery, upon inspection approval of all that she, make sure that it's in line, and wants those vehicles that don't ever... Jane, I don't give a voice, when I talked yesterday, we're a little bit sounding like Godfather, or your voice back.
It's been...
It's been a little quiet.
I, I go from, someone said I sounded like Lauren McCullough, and someone else sounded like, sound like a 14-year-old boy. His voice is changing. I don't know where the compliment is, if there's any at all. We did, we did some investigation with the state bid and the challenges that were there with the state bid and the buses that were and were not going to be available this year and the prices that were there. One of the things we found that anything that we, on the regular mini bus, and this is replacing a preschool head, special needs mini bus that is in our regular 12-year replacement plan, it's replacing a 2002 mini bus. It's now on, still in our fleet. GM and Ford, the cutaway vans that we use for mini vans now, there's going to be a situation for the next 18 months in getting a diesel engine with those. U-Haul had made a large purchase nationwide, so schools and airport shuttles have been left out in the cold, and we have to wait our turn. They may get, they're replacing a great deal of their fleet. So, that was going to take some, it'd be 2016 before we had anything in the diesel line. We had three purchases made last year. We had, we were given the opportunity to buy the Fourth Sister Bus to the one that we, the, the three that we purchased last year. It only has 1,300 miles, still has the full 10-year, 150,000-mile warranty, and at a substantial reduced price, it's a heavier duty, more in line with our Head Start federal guidelines as far as the seating and the capacity, the restraint system for the students, and all this came in at just under $16,000 less than if we bought the state bid and waited. So, I am recommending that we purchase this 2014 AE, I see, AE 300 school bus for...
Did you get your diesel, Jamie?
Yes, and I got my diesel. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oakley. Dr. Bayer, anything else you want to say?
No, I think we're just asking for the approval if, if that was the pleasure of the Board.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve these bus purchases?
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Financial expenditure goals, Ms. Tollit.
Thank you, Mr. Birchard. Annually, the Board is required to establish financial expenditure goals. This was created as part of the 2007, 2008 Legislative Session. We have adopted the same goals for many years now. The goals we establish are that we will strive to meet or exceed the state averages for the percentage of academic achievement expenditures and instructional support expenditures. In addition, we will be at or below the state averages for overhead and operational expenditures and non-operating expenditures. This takes all of the schools within the state of Indiana and determines an average, and then we will say that we will have more money going into the classroom and less money for non-operational. I do like to point out annually that I believe their metric is flawed. It includes expenditures for debt service, security, food service, and they identify those as non-operating expenditures. Therefore, any monies you expend, expend for those type items are considered to be a negative in our, in our comparison and every other school's comparison. We all know how well hungry students learn. Transportation's considered non-operating, so it's an exercise we go through every year because we're required to, so...
If it's not operating, what are they considering?
Non-operating.
You've got two choices.
It is not, it's, it can be considered non-operating, excuse me, oh, operating, but it is non-instructional. It doesn't carry any weight towards the instruction of the students, which they deem that to be a negative.
But if we can't get them here, and we don't feed them, then that's not a negative. I mean, that's a positive?
Well, see, you're thinking logically.
What was it you said? We don't make the rules.
We don't make the rules.
We just try and follow the rules. So, there we are. I appreciate you approving our expenditure goals. So far, there's not been any penalty for not meeting that. However, I will say that we have been at or above the state average for our percentage of expenditures that are represented as instructional or student support, but the metric's flawed.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the financial expenditure goals?
I don't like that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I'll second the motion.
And Mr. Hilton, seconds. Any discussion?
The only saving grace in all this is if the whole state is facing the same thing. So...
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries.
It becomes distorted when you have schools that might, you know, outsource transportation or, I mean, they'll still have transportation expenditures or outfor, outsource food service that does not flow through their financial statements. We outsource, but it does flow through our financial statements because it's actually our income and our expenses. So, some of those schools complain and distort that with types of expenditures like that. No debt, they don't have debt or low debt, so...
Okay. Move on then to the Education Hall of Fame Selection Committee. Dr. Hodges.
Board, I'm asking that you affirm my appointments of Laura West and Ralph Birchard for a two-year term on the Hall of Fame Selection Committee, and they will be joining Ben Felber and Cindy Perez on your affirmation.
Do I hear a motion to approve these people?
Mr. President, I'll make that motion to approve the Education Hall of Fame Selection Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Kirchner, I'll let you second.
Thank you. I am a member, okay, tell us.
There you are. All those in, well, any discussion?
I think those are good picks. Good, good job, Russ.
Who are the, do you have community members in that too, or?
It's five people. You have, you have Cindy Perez.
Oh, real estate lady, okay.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we have permission to advertise for the REP, which is the Request for Proposals for the Annual Head Start Audit. Ms. Tollit, you again, start.
I don't know if Mrs. Boggs wants to speak on this. I'm happy to, but if you want to share any information, you're welcome to.
I'll let you speak, just, we watched a webinar on this today. It's kind of like our first presentation, very confusing, which you have to follow the rules. So, now, Head Start is requiring, as part of federal regulation, that we have to have an audit every year. Before, we were able to use the school corporations audit, and they also audited Head Start accounts, but now we have to do a separate audit, which will come out of our grants, so we're looking for the proper person to do that audit for our program.
We need to advertise. It's, it's RFP, Request for Proposal, for these auditing services. Every other year, we'll be able to use the audit that's performed by the State Board of Accounts when they come in. However, on those off-years, we will have to be contracting... However, on those off-years, we will have to be contracting for an independent audit of the Head Start funds and program. They will only be looking at that. Again, as Lori said, that takes funds away from the Head Start program. They'll have to pay the bill, so less money going towards kids. They have a significant amount of overhead costs. I'm on my soapbox a little bit, you know. Lori sees it more than I do, but so much money is spent on overhead in their, in their federal program. I'm not speaking about locally, but the requirements that they have, that could just be used to support the kids. It's so very disappointing.
What's the thinking behind it?
The federal government.
Yeah.
And I don't know where that Paperwork Reduction Act went, but it did not center out to the Head Start program.
Well, the one thing I might say about audits, not, not all Head Start programs run through the school corporation like ours, and so there's, there's another layer of oversight
Yes.
that may not be. So, so some of the programs, that, that may be part of it. We're just kind of caught up in, in all of that. It is frustrating, but it is what it is.
And we do need to advertise for that. We'll accept the proposals. Once we're sure of what all the specific requirements are, I assume that's part of the webinar that you were watching today, to get the final details on what needs to be included in that R F P. And then we'll be back making recommendations of awarding that contract, if you will, to an accounting firm to perform those auditing services at an established rate.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to give permission to advertise?
I move to advertise.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any further questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Now we have appointment of Dr. Bayer to the East Central School Trust Committee. Dr. Hodges.
Board, one of the things that the East Central School Trust is wanting to do is to really move more into wellness. We think that's not only good for our employees, but we think that there'll be a reflection of that in premiums and that going forward. And so we have formed a committee. It's a recommendation of our attorney that that appointment be approved by the board. There's a stipend that is associated with that. We're just getting started with that. It's all new. We're going to see how all that works out. So the recommendation is that you appoint Dr. Bayer, as I represented, to that East Central Indiana School Trust Committee for Wellness.
Do I hear a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Bayer?
I don't like that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Hilton.
Just a surplus furniture donation. Did we discuss that?
Actually, that was done in the consented journey. It was on there twice, and it's been corrected, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Back to, we have the motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion carries. All right, that completes the action items. Now we're ready for discussion items, which is the school calendar for next school year. Dr. Hodges.
Board, you have in your packet a recommendation from the Calendar Committee for 1516. It is basically a mirror image of what we are doing this current year, with one exception. The committee wanted to make President's Day, which would be February 15th next year, to make that our in-service day, and that we move one of the makeup snow days till April. So the makeup snow days will be April 1st and April the 18th. This calendar has the last student day on May 18th, the teacher's last day on the 19th of May, assuming that we don't have any more than two snow days next year.
How many in this year's calendar?
Two.
Two also?
Right. We, we were supposed, this, this coming President's Day was, is a makeup snow day. We will be in school, and the second one is probably around the 17th through 18th of April.
Yeah, I think it's the 17th.
Seventeen.
I'm not sure, but it's in that, that this edition.
Yeah, basically, these were corresponding dates, so that's... One thing I will ask, we did, we did wrestle with a calendar for 1617.
The mail was updated. President's Day here, 2015.
Fifteenth, the third Monday.
The third Monday. This is the school makeup, this is, this will now be a school makeup day. I updated it after your packets. Because we changed that.
Not the students, the teachers.
This Friday, this Friday's an in-service day. So, yeah, the intent of the Calendar Committee a year ago was if we didn't have any snow days, it would be a nice four-day weekend. We tried, we tried to build a couple of those in. It just didn't, it didn't work out that way. We bogged down on the 1617 calendar because Christmas and New Year's is on, New Year's is on Sunday, so that creates some challenges. We got down to where we put the second makeup snow day. If it's your desire to have a second year, I've worked on that. I think I have a proposal I can take back to the committee, or if you want to just wait till a year from now to do that. One of the reasons I was trying to get two years done is, is some of the folks in our career center get a little antsy waiting on us, even though our policy gives us till like May to get this done. They want it done in September so they can plan. So be happy to revisit with them if you'd like, if that's not important, why we can, we can delay that, whatever your pleasure is. You don't have to vote. Just kind of let me know what you think.
I was at the Calendar Committee meeting, and there were some real issues with 1617, with, even with testing, testing windows and, and other kind of issues also, so.
That's really where it broke down, was trying to place, we did move, we did try to honor the President's Day, and then where do, where do we put that, that extra makeup snow day? We do have Easter to, to take into consideration in 17, and we were, we were a little bit unsure where the testing windows would be. But I, I, if it's your desire to have a second one, I'll do a little bit more investigation. If I think I can pull it off, we'll get, we'll get the folks together again. I think we're pretty close to being able to do that. There are some things that are, that will look a little different in that calendar than this calendar, but we'll explain that too, if you want to do that. If not, we can wait till 16 to do that.
Based on what you said, Ms. Kirchner, though, they're really not ready for that second year, so...
Well, that was kind of my feeling, because there were too many variables involved. We had snow days put in, and we had some things put in, but with, they could conflict with test preparation, with actual testing windows, and with the extended time that's going to be needed with what we just saw, it could, could mess some things up, and we didn't want to, but we just didn't feel comfortable doing that at this time for 1617. 1516 was not really an issue, but 1617, we just didn't have enough data. We didn't have enough good information, and it's a whole lot easier not to have to fix it once you've got it done.
Yeah, and I'm not ready to share that, that all with you. We can go back and work, or we can, that, that's really the, the only, the only question I had for, if you, if you want us to try to hammer that out, we will. Because I think we're, I think we're close.
Yeah. I would agree. I would agree. I think we are.
But we, but we don't have consensus to come say this is exactly what we're going to do. But I don't think it'll take a real long time to work that out.
I think once we have better information as to, to, you know, where some windows are and some other, some other issues.
Basically, it was the I-step piece?
I-step pieces, and, and we don't even know, that's an interesting step to have to do, hopefully.
But, but there again, a few years ago, when you said on the committee, we didn't have any makeup snow days, and would they be comfortable with just one makeup snow day as opposed to have, I mean, there's nothing that says we have to have any. We don't have to have two. We have had two. So those are some things that I thought we could discuss and...
And I, I'd like to address the reason why we moved one of the snow, the makeup dates to President's Day, because a lot of people have childcare issues, and the banks and the post offices and the public are not open at that time. So some people that have childcare issues would not necessarily have them because the parent would be off work too, if they work for a governmental agency. So it was, that was kind of part of the thinking there to, to help out those that, you know, with, with childcare issues, because they're, sometimes they create a very problematic for a lot of people.
I wanted to add too, there's, just for the sake of adding it, but there's a lot of community people that depend upon the school calendar, and I've had several calls already wanting to know, well, what you're going to be doing next year, because we need to plan this.
We're actually ahead of policy.
I know, with policy, but what I'm saying is important to a lot of people, so need to move on it as quickly as we can.
We have, we have two issues. If, if I don't hear any further discussion on the 1516, we'll bring it back as an action item for you next, next month, and then what's your desire? Obviously, there are some problems we weren't able to overcome the first night in 1617. We're willing to give it another shot, or if you just want to put that right for a while, that's fine too. I've got my notes in, in a file, so that's not a problem.
I would think it would depend upon if you're ready to present it or not.
I'm ready to take another one of it.
The other, so I think that depends upon your committee or the Calendar Committee.
Just one member. I, I voted for the, I voted for it. I don't have a particular problem with it. I, I think the, you know, there was pretty much consensus on the committee.
On 1516?
On 1516.
He's referring to 1616.
No, 1617, I don't feel comfortable with that at all. No, I don't feel comfortable.
You think we can work it out in one more meeting?
I think so, yeah. But I think we need more, I think we need more solid information.
Absolutely. Right.
Yeah. I think we need more solid information. I think once we have solid information concerning some of our concerns, then I think we can work it out in, in another meeting pretty easily. We were close, just no cigars.
We may surprise you. We may have a recommend, we may have a, one to discuss next month.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion on the school calendar? If not, then we'll move on to the Board of School Trustees Protocol, and I believe, Dr. Hodges, you have that item as well.
Board, I, I gave you a copy last month, told you that I'd like to have some discussion on that this month. I didn't get any feedback from anyone since last meeting, so here it is again. There again, the history of this is during some workshops that we had done, it was recommended that we develop an operating protocol. Some of the thinking of the board at the time when we worked on it, we have expectations of, of about every employee group that we have. We believe in accountability, and the board thought this was an opportunity to hold themselves accountable to, to some standard. So this is, this impacts you. I'll bring it to you, based on your discussion. You'll give me some direction, whether you want to tweak some of these items, whether, whether you're not interested in pursuing this any further. But I felt since we had one hanging on the wall, we need to either get some new signatures on that or have some discussion as to what, what you would like to, what you'd like to do with this.
I have some major objections, and I've had major objections since you sent me a copy of this back in August, when I announced that I would be a candidate for school board. I understand the theory behind it completely, because we have to operate in an organized fashion. However, as I read it, as it is now, I cannot do the job that I was designed to do, that I was elected to do to represent my constituents in Fayette County under these kinds of restrictions. The general consensus of opinion, and I have showed this to some of my constituents, that this basically is a gag order, and whether or not it is designed to be that, that is the perception of it. And perception in politics, as we know, is very, very important. As to the first item, for example, surprises to the board superintendent will be exception, not the rule. I understand that. We agree to ask the board president or superintendent to place an item on the agenda instead of bringing up unexpectedly at the meeting. What if something that is collateral or essential to something that's already been brought up? Does this mean that this collateral item to something that's already been brought up is not to be brought up again? Is to be assumed to be settled? In other words, you have an issue that's being brought up to the board and to, to the president or the superintendent, and there's discussion about it, but there's new things that are collateral to that.
And I think that's why the first sentence says it's the exception, not the rule.
Okay.
I think the point really, Anne, too, this, we just feel we need a guideline to go by. If there are things that you personally do not agree with, you really need to talk, you know, with Dr. Hodges, and we can make changes. It doesn't have to remain here, but we feel we do need a guideline, since we are the policymakers for the school. We do tell what everybody else, and we felt that we needed to have something. But you have the right to change. If you don't agree, then get with them or whoever you want to, and make the ones that you have a problem with, and then we can go from there.
I just really have a, I have real difficulty with, with the protocols. Everything is to be filtered through, and quite frankly, sometimes I think information is super-filtered. In other words, what, what the concerns of the citizens are, by the time it gets filtered, it, it's lost something, for whatever reason. And, you know, again, this is the perception of, of a lot of the clientele, a lot of the citizens, as, as taxpayers. The school corporation constitutes about 65% of the tax base here in Fayette County, okay? We're spending taxpayers' money, and I think we have to be good stewards of that. The general consensus of opinion is that, at least from the constituents that I've heard from, and I've heard from many, is that the input gets filtered to the point that they feel totally impotent. They feel that the board basically is a rubber stamp, and I just don't think that's right. Because I think we have serious issues that we have to discuss, and if we don't discuss them in an open fashion, so the people of Fayette County can see that we are discussing them in an open fashion, they can only assume that this is going on behind their back, and they don't like that. And some of the things in this order would tend to make people believe that.
Bottom line, what are you saying? What are you really saying?
What I'm really saying is that this top-down management thing doesn't really work very well, I don't think, when we're a public entity. The last stop, not the first, will be the School Board of Trustees. As a representative of my district, part of my job is to listen to my incumbents, to listen to my citizens, okay? This, as I'm reading this, if I have a citizen come to me with an issue, I have to refer it to Dr. Hodges first. And I, I have issue with that. Not that he would not pay attention to the issue, but I think that's part of my job as a school board member.
Here's the intent of that, and I didn't, we borrowed this from somebody else. The intent of that is if a parent comes to you and says, "Classroom teacher Anne Kirchner did this to my child," and you, school board member, I want you to do something about that. Would you want the school board to come to you, or do you want that to be referred back to the lowest level? And if we don't get resolution through, through the process, through, through working with the classroom teacher, working with the building principal, going through Dr. Reekin, going through the superintendent, we still don't have resolution, then the last stop is the board to get a result. That's, whether that says that clearly, that I believe is the intent of that.
Okay, but that's not how it reads, and that's not how it reads to the public. And I think that's really, really an important situation. Let me think else.
Is there a better way to write that?
I think so, and I will, I can work on that. Because the perception of the public is that they feel very impotent, and they don't like that feeling. And I think there's some huge trust issues also, huge trust issues, because board members and administrators, particularly on the upper level, I think that the feedback that I'm getting from my constituents, and it's considerable.
Anne, I'd like, how many constituents are you talking about?
Would you like to see my email file or my phone file now?
Just give us an approximate number. That's all I'm interested.
Probably, since I was elected, probably upwards of 300 communications of one type or another, and they're all saying basically the same kind of thing. They think that this board operates as some sort of secret society, and they make decisions based on information, some of which obviously cannot be made public, okay? Anything having to do with students. I recognize the privacy issues involved with, with talking about certain things. But other policy-type situations, I think they feel very impotent and having no, no input into it.
Do they attend any board meetings?
Do they attend board meetings? They watch them on TV.
Again, what I would say, Anne, is we can't iron all of this out here. If you have particular issues within this protocol that you don't agree with, then you need to meet with Dr. Hodges or whoever you want and get those changed, because this is, we're not voting on this. not voting on this tonight. This is a guideline that we all feel comfortable with and can follow. Again, let's make it do that, but I think that we do need some kind of, a protocol or some kind of rules to follow, because everyone else does.
I'm not, Ralph, I'm not disagreeing with you that we don't need a protocol, that's not my issue at all.
I understand what you're saying, so let's come up with one that you agree with. That's all I'm asking.
I think we need more transparency, because the perception is that we're not...
Can I just, just say this? This, this isn't my protocol, this, this was developed in response to what the board wanted to see happen, shared with that, and, and there again, I'd have to go back and look and see where I borrowed it from, I didn't...
It's been, since 2007.
Correct. But that's when I was asked to put that together by the board, and I would guess, based on some of the things that we're sharing, I'm not sure I'm comfortable giving it to you to say it, I authored this, because there seems to be some question about my credibility, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about that, so I'm more than happy to meet with the committee of the board and, and work on this, and if you don't want to do it, it's okay with me, I'm just trying to be responsive to what you said at one point in time, you wanted to have happen, that's accountability piece from my perspective, you have an expectation, I want to live up to your expectation. If expectations have changed, it's okay.
Why do you feel like your credibility's been challenged?
I have to listen to what's been said, top-down management, information not getting through to the board, not being transparent, I, I, I think that's, I take a little bit of offense to that, and so if I don't see the world correctly, you know what kind of information I share with you, you know the discussions that's going on, and if you feel there need to be change in protocol and operation, you ought to be the ones making the change on that, not me, so it comes back and say, this, this is his protocol, this is what he wants to have happen, because this isn't mine, this is yours, I'm held to a different set of standards and a different accountability issue than what you folks are, and it's okay, but I'm just trying to be responsive to your needs.
I understand that.
I think my issue is, I've been on both...
We can do a committee, yeah?
Yeah, my, my issue is I've been on both sides of the fence.
I'll, I'll, I'll put it together.
I have too.
If you direct me to, to...
But, you know, I've taught in a school corporation.
I have too.
Recently.
Recently.
All right, let's, let's do this, let's have a committee to work and come up with a protocol that, where you can discuss it, and so, Dr. Hodges, if you want to...
We'll make it happen.
Make that happen, you'll get with, if you would like to be on the committee and...
Yeah, if you, if you're interested, shoot me an email and let me know tonight that you're interested in that.
Well, obviously, I'm interested, because as exists, there's no way I will ever sign this, because I don't feel I can do my job that I was elected to do under these kinds of constraints, as I'm understanding them, and if I'm having a misunderstanding of it, so be it. But I've had two attorneys look at this also, and they basically agree with my consensus. So, you know, I'm happy to sit on a committee to try to rework it, to make it better for all of us.
And when I, when I put out in my communication to you, if you have questions, please let me know, Ralph and I communicated this weekend, and he said, "Have you had any feedback?" And I'd answer was, "No." Had I known ahead of time there were issues, we might have been able to work through some, and maybe not, but that's, all I can do is ask the question and be responsive to, to respond back to.
I understand that.
Can I respond to why people don't respond?
Actually, I think we're getting off a subject here, because we are...
Okay, that's fine, we'll take that up in committee.
We turned, we turned this over to a committee, so we'll let it work from that point, right?
Let me know when that committee meets, please.
I always do.
Yeah.
Do we have any public comments from the audience? Okay, we have superintendent's discussion group reports, do we have any principal director reports? Director Personnel report?
Yes, Mr. Birch, just one item, our professional development classes for this year, for our second-year teachers, they'll complete the modules next week, and then for our first year teachers, they'll complete their first four, so those are finishing up, and those are basically taught by teachers and our administrators to assist our first and second year teachers, so that'll be done next week, that's all I had to add.
Okay, thank you, sir. Director Finance report?
Thank you, Mr. Birch, just briefly, a week ago yesterday was our second count day, this represents our funding for January through June 30th. Phyllis is still working through some of the placements in, at the Care Pavilion in, in students who is, who attend our corporation through foster placement or medical placement, but it looks like we'll be down about 39 students. This is about a decline for six months of revenue of about $120,000 over what we would have, you know, received had we been on a status quo.
That was compared to September count?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
How do we cover that?
We do have cash balances, and we have a rainy day fund, we have had some transitions in staffing, a few people leave, we've used substitutes during a period of time, we now have some people rolling on, on contracts, so keep an eye on it.
There is some, there is some good news in the 39, I think, did you tell me 23, Randy? 23 early grads?
I'll say 24.
24, so, so 24 early grads out of the 39, that's, that's kind of the silver lining of all that, but, but there's, there's a financial piece with that as well, so...
Do we, we still get a calendar of those full-time?
No, it'll show up in your graduation rate, but it won't show up in your...
Not in February.
Yeah.
Plus on one, minus on the other.
That's, that's probably the lowest decline that we've experienced, when you take into consideration the mid-year graduates in a couple of years, so...
I was thinking that you'd projected close to that.
Last, last fall, we had not lost as many as we had the previous couple of years, and so it's nice that the spring didn't lose quite as many, or, it, it's a winter count, but they call it the spring count, so, we'll be all right.
There's actually two counts now, right?
There are, yeah, and this funding that we're receiving now is based on that September count, however, once it's all filed and they get everybody's in and done, they recalculate, and it will be retroactively applied to January, so we will owe the state some money back, and they'll reduce our distributions going forward.
So we bribe everybody to be there on that day?
Well, I'd like to.
They send people out looking for them, Carl.
I'm going to give you that job.
Fine, done.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Birch, two things, this Friday is our Teacher Inservice Day, and I've seen the agendas from all of our principals, and they're very impressive, we have a lot of training going on with blended learning, a lot of the Schmecken's work with literacy in all curriculums, and the close reading, and there's some data analysis and some I-step preparation things, so feel free to pop in any of the buildings this Friday, Friday to the 13th, and get a taste of what the teachers are doing, and, and some of the learning that we're doing as adults. And the second thing is, on Monday, we're opening the window for Teacher of the Year nominations, it'll remain open for a month, you can get applications here in this office, or on any this school website, they're going to be posting the application that they can submit for Teacher of the Year, so, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hodges, Superintendent's report?
I don't think I have any further, thank you.
Okay, does anyone have further to the cause, comment?
Well, I'll talk about Jamie Hand, that's been done, bless her heart, congratulations to Jamie again, but I'd like to mention Mr. Tyler and his Coral Department, I noticed that they did good at Muncie, in fact, Mr. Tyler said that that was, he had more students placed this year than he's ever had placed, so they're on to Indianapolis, I believe, for, for more competition, so I'll be anxious to see how Roger and the Coral Department do up there, they, they do a great job.
I had, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I like to brag on the middle school kids, because they're having a charity basketball game again on the 26th, mark your calendar, it's a lot of fun, we have a DJ. Dr. Reekin, I think you were one of our, 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 our coaches, all the money goes to the Lord's Kitchen, all the kids get so involved, and the staff gets involved, and it's really an opportunity to see the children give back to something in a community, and I think the most touching thing is a lot of the children that pay to get in, and you can, you can give a donation, are actually those who eat at the Lord's Kitchen, and they want to, they want to participate also. And the Lord's Kitchen now has a Sunday night meal, which is, so there, there are six nights a week, six nights a week for meals, so there's a more cost involved with that, but come by and support us, and it's going to be a whole lot of fun, the kids are all psyched, we'll have a thing on Union Savings and Loans running, running board, and...
Are you going to play it?
I'm, no, I get to keep score, I get to keep...
So what was the date then?
February 26th, it's a Thursday evening, it starts at the Spartan Bowl about 5:00. We have a disc jockey from one of the Richmond radio stations, we, the boys team plays the girls team, sort of, and we have a lot of faculty involved, and a lot of the kids involved, and they're getting all psyched for it, and we hope for, last year we raised about $1,500, I think, Beth, and the need is even greater this year because of the extra added meal on Sunday evening, which is now feeding about 40 to 50 people, so it's a really good cause, and it's an awful lot of fun, and we're having it in the bowl, so we've got room for 5,000 people, so as many as we can get there, we really appreciate it.
Oh, yes, both the preachers.
Oh, but, yeah, Carl, why not? Yeah, but that's just something that the, this is the fourth annual one of these, and it's grown every year, and again, with the needs of our county, this is really something pretty cool for the middle school kids to do, to give back to their community in a very positive way.
I thought maybe I was going to talk about the music department at the middle school too, I'll put the numbers in, in your Friday letter, but I, on the podcast, I did mention, and I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know that the, the results of students earning gold ratings at, at their vocal music contest was maybe not as impressive as what the high school, but they did, they did an outstanding job with that as well, and we're proud of them. Listen to the podcast, you'll get the numbers there, or read the Friday letter.
And let's add to that, too, there's a lot of sectionals getting ready to start and various sporting events, and so, wish all of those people lots of luck, and those endeavors, and I do want to mention that Dr. Bayer and I attended the governance meeting that was held for our district up at Muncie Central, week, last week, wasn't it? And was a very good meeting, I wish you could all have attended, I, I really learned a lot from that meeting, so... Anybody else? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton, and thank you, Mr. Taylor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the meeting is adjourned, and remember we...